Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, July 1st, 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council Pro Tem Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell. Councilwoman Cruz. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President, we have a call.
Thank you. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Crowde, can we do the acknowledgement of the migraine communities?
Sure.
As our first item?
If you'd like to do that. I'd ask the Mayor and Ms. Suzanne Hannah, our Sustainability Planner, to come up to the podium.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'm Suzanne Hannah, Sustainability Planner here at the city of Southfield. Today, we are acknowledging two sustainability designations that the city has received. The first of which is the Michigan Green Communities and the second is the Conference of Mayors and Honorable Mention. We're going to start with the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. The city of Southfield has been working very hard for many years and we've finally been acknowledged as a gold-designated community. We've earned 138 total points in various categories due to this challenge and we are now part of a collective community as a Michigan Green Community. This year, this past year, 63 total communities have earned this designation and we are alongside Ann Arbor, Birmingham, Royal Oak as a gold-designated community. So what exactly is Michigan Green Communities? It is a statewide sustainability benchmarking program. It provides networking opportunities and technical assistance to various local government organizations. The benefits of participating is, it's already evident. I've already attended several meetings with the Michigan Green Communities cohort and they've already introduced me to various communities and lots of networking opportunities. Most recently, we had a field trip to Ann Arbor to look at Bryant Community Center, which is on their way to become Ann Arbor's resiliency hub and it runs on renewable energy for multiple days. So it gives me ideas of what we could be doing here in Southeast Michigan as a sustainability planner and connecting with other communities. So what have we earned points in? So these are the nine categories that we had to report on. The organization sends us an assessment spreadsheet essentially with all these categories and different points and through collaboration with the various departments here at the city, I was able to identify all the points that would accumulate to 138 total points. Some of the highest-ranking categories that we've earned points in is planning for inclusive and lasting impacts, sustainable land use and economic development, as well as protecting and conserving water resources. So this is meant to show that this program is oversought by Eagle, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, and they have a program called Catalyst Communities, which the Michigan Green Communities is a subset of that. Ultimately, the Michigan Green Communities is administered by the Michigan Municipal League and it is in great partnership with the University of Michigan Sustainable Sustainability Institute. So one of the biggest benefits for gold-designated communities or communities that rank higher in the platinum category is eventually we would get a fellow assigned from the University of Michigan to work on a sustainability project here in the city. Actually, later this month, I'll be attending a presentation for previous projects that have been completed by Michigan fellows, so that'll give us an idea of how we want to allocate those resources to a potential fellow next year, what kind of projects we could, you know, potentially allocate to a student for a sustainability project here in the city. So these are all the partners that make the Michigan Green Communities possible. As mentioned, Eagle, Michigan Municipal League, the DNR, MDOT. So there's a lot of key players that make those programs successful and the ultimate goal is to enhance sustainability in the state. So a lot of communities are already participating and it's great to see and we're part of a great network of communities to advance our own sustainability initiatives. The next award is, I have to credit this to Mayor Cyver because I didn't know that this existed, so it's the Mayor's Climate Protection Award and it is a submittal of, you know, all of your climate and sustainability actions that have been performed in the city. It was a long shot, we were submitting it, we did not think we would even make it because this is a nationwide competition, so I'm very proud of this. We earned an honorable mention for a small city in their terms. On a nationwide term, a small city is anyone who has less than 100,000 people in population. So we are featured in this document. It is available on their website. It will soon be available on our Sustainable Southfield website for the public to access, for you to access, and you can read up on the Sustainable Southfield Initiative. So essentially, what the United States Conference of Mayors is, it's a nonpartisan organization of cities that have a population of 30,000 or more. And maybe Mayor Cyver can speak more to this, but the Conference of Mayors essentially provides advocacy, networking, city promotion, and sharing of best practices. So to make it on a national level, being acknowledged, that's huge. You know, other organizations around the United States are going to see that, you know, we've been acknowledged for sustainability initiatives. With that, I'd like to thank you all and I hope you're proud of this designation as much as I am.
I want to thank the Planning Department, particularly Suzanne, for heading up this effort. We are very serious about green initiatives and being a sustainable community. We have lots of work to do. We will continue on these efforts and outside benchmarking, as this is the case, is always very good, which kind of gives us where we've been, where we need to go. I see there's a platinum level, so that'll be our goal, but to exceed the gold level by 38 points is significant. So thank you very much, Suzanne, and our planners, Tom Payson and Terry Crowde.
Congratulations. Mr. Crowde?
Yeah, I'd like to also shout out and thank Suzanne for leading these efforts, as well as the rest of the planning team and all the other departments. Mr. Zorn and I have talked that the city has been engaged in green infrastructure and doing sustainable things in a very disconnected way over years and having Suzanne on board and having us focused on a sustainability plan and putting it all together, we are being recognized by our peers for all the good effort and as the mayor said, there's still room to grow, but we have a benchmark now and we know what we want to aspire to. So thank you to the mayor, Suzanne, and the rest of the city for all their good efforts.
Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor, to the Planning Department for providing this report. You're doing it for the right reasons, but it's also nice to get recognized for your efforts. My only question would be, the things that we have in flight today, do we know or have any feedback from the assessors on what could we have done to have gotten more than honorable mention, to get to those different levels? And do we have things in the works that align with some of those things that didn't allow us to win the full award or a higher award, rather?
So again, the report will be available that will highlight all the criteria and the things that we continue to strive towards so that we can get to that next level. Many of those things are in play, but if we look at how far we've come in the last year and to be recognized by two organizations, that we are making progress and especially that gold, when we were sitting down, that was, we were really trying to push to see if we could score as well as we did. And yes, there's always room for improvement, but that criteria is available.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move on to Communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. I understand there are a number of speakers who want to talk about the storm that we had on June 20th, as well as water that they had in their basement. The preliminary report from the Department of Public Works found no evidence that our sanitary collection systems were surcharged. This implies that the pump station was operating, but it's still under investigation. The first speaker, and I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. The first speaker is Michael Watkins.
Good evening. And yeah, that pump at 10 Mile and Pierce, this last backup for health reasons, I have emphysema, I wound up in the emergency room behind that, the bacteria levels and stuff from that sewage. You know, the city passed a bond to rebuild the sewer drain, the storm drains in the roads in that area and installed that pump. And prior to the installation of that pump, the only incident of backup in that area came in a 100-year rain in 2014. So any run of the real, run of the mill rain was easily handled by the system prior to the installation of that pump at 10 Mile and Pierce. The first time it happened, it was less than two inches of rain in April of 2022. Backed up everybody in the neighborhood. On the 20th of June, you say the pump was working fine, it was raining, it was two hours after the rain. And I was standing in my basement, putting stuff in my freezer. It wasn't a backup, that water was being pumped into my basement. I know the difference between a backup and a pumping action. I'm 70 years old, I'm retired military, been everywhere, I know what it looks like. So where are we here now? You know, there's a data trail on that pump that you can go and look at. Maybe it says it was running, but there's other data that can be looked at. There's a server somewhere with all that data and it will confirm that whatever it was doing, it wasn't the right thing to do on both of those dates. So what am I asking for? I'm asking for the city to just step up and say, hey, it didn't work. This sewer system in, we didn't work. We're going to go back and look at it, we're going to go redo this pump, we're going to compensate everybody for their losses on the 22nd in April 2022 and April 2024. Going to check everybody's houses for bacteria, help them clean it up, go back and look at everything that you did under that bond and fix it. Because these problems that we have in my neighborhood right now did not exist prior to those new drains being put in, in that pump. That is the common denominator and that's what's causing the problem in that neighborhood. So, you know, you say it's under review, you have a date for that, we need to know. You need to work with the neighbors, we're not your enemy. I've lived here since 1997. I would like to stay here, but under the current conditions, you may see an empty house on Templar Avenue because I have to abandon my house for health reasons. So my time's just about up, I'll let other people speak.
There is no clapping, this is a business meeting, please keep the comments, hollering and clapping should not be happening. Thank you. Also, the Department of Public Works has asked that there is a piece of paper outside in the hallway on the table that if you did experience any type of water in your basement, please make sure you add your address to that list so they can follow up with you directly. Our next speaker is Amber McCurtis. Robin Chambers?
My name is Robin Chambers and my family and I have resided at 24536 Templar Avenue in Southfield for over 30 years. I wanted to say something about the June 20th flooding. On June 20th, in my basement, it was flooded up to five inches of water. How do I know this? My granddaughter was actually in the basement at that time, on the far end of the basement. I had gone down previously during the high storm to check on the, on to see if my sump pump had worked. My sump pump was working. I looked inside of it, my sump pump was not full. In about an hour and a half to two hours after going back upstairs, I hear a scream from my granddaughter. I go down to the basement at the bottom of my stairs, she is immersed in five inches of water. I had to make sure she stayed out of it because of the high level of water. I did not know where the electricity was in my basement. Upon taking upon myself as her grandmother to figure that out and found out it was safe for her to come through, I quickly escorted her out the basement. I have severe damage in my basement. My question to you is, who's going to replace all my severe damage? I know it was this flood because on June 5th, excuse me, June 4th, I had Roto-Rooter come out to my house. Not only did they do my basement, but I had it scoped. That means I had a camera go through the entire system and clean it out. Not only did I have them clean it out, I also had them water pressure through it. My piping is clean. So for them to say that it was not them, I know for a fact on record, it was. That water went out very quickly. Now my question to you is, what's going to happen? When my sister called on December, I'm sorry, on June 27th, once we discovered that we could call the city of Southfield, we weren't notified by Southfield. Would have been nice to get a courtesy, but we got no notification that saying, oops, these are the standards, this is the public act, which is a state public act that you must follow. I looked it up, there's a state public act that makes you held accountable for the damage in my house, signed by the governor. She called within 10 minutes, I had somebody from the city of Southfield knocking at my door within 10 minutes to give me a paper to fill out of all the damage in my house. Not only that, but they took my name, phone number, and email address and said, your supervisors will be contacting me to come to my home to do any necessary cleaning and/or repairs in my basement. As of this date and this time, I have not received a phone call back.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tracy Johnson.
That is my sister, she's my girlfriend.
Okay.
I yield her time.
Our next speaker is Clarence Barber.
Hello, hello, Council. My name is Clarence Barber III. I reside at 24651 Maryland Street between Southfield Road and Greenfield. On June 20th, I was sitting in my basement and I noticed water draining towards my couch area in the basement. So I immediately got up, went, looked by the drain that has overflowed two previous times, and once again, I had a drain issue. This particular time, the water that was coming into my basement was pure sewage. I had feces, I had toilet paper, I had grit, grime, and mold in my basement. I had to pull drywall, I had to move furniture, we've lost electronics, we've lost video equipment. I'm a videographer by trade. I've lost so much due to these floods, it's kind of out of hand. My question, just like everybody else's question probably here, is what's going to be done? Because I did call the city and I forget the gentleman's name I did speak to, he said, you guys had people out while the storm was happening, but we were out watching the drains just to make sure because it was a heavy storm. It wasn't anybody by our drains looking at anything. And then the storm subsided, but just like the other community member said, the drains started overflowing two hours after the storm. My drain overflowed so much, the top metal piece that covers the drain popped off. My basement is 1,500 square feet and the entire basement was covered. My office, my back rooms, my sitting areas for my kids, we have grandchildren, they can't come to the house. The house pure, purely smelled like feces. So that's what we're dealing with on 24651 Maryland and we're just basically asking for help financially, you know, whatever the city can do because this is, you know, as a community, you shouldn't have to come home feeling like, I don't want to be home because it smells like it smells. Let me get my kids somewhere else so they don't have to be home. So my time is about up, but that is what's happening and that is what happened on June 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Pierce.
Good late afternoon. I live at 24749 Maryland Street, also south of 10 Mile. My wife runs a licensed daycare business out of the basement of our home, so I want to bring up, I'm echoing what a lot of people have said here, I don't want to repeat, but it's not just about grandchildren and the living space that we have, but there are people that also have businesses out of their basements and we're talking about having little children down in a basement that's literally filling up with sewage water. We've never had a backup before, before, I've lived in this house for almost 10 years, it's never come, never backed up into our house even once, thank God. I have a whole drain system around the house, a sump pump, it's never had any issues. But when I went downstairs on the 20th, the, again, two hours after the rain stopped, there was sewer just gushing, gushing out of the floor drains. I'm a little embarrassed to admit this, but I stood on it in my bare feet till I tried to hold it back and it actually, I think, I think helped it. Between that and my sump pump running full blast, it was shooting out all the water into my backyard, which to my horror, I later found my kids were back there playing because it's a big puddle of water, it's a fun thing to play in, right? But they didn't realize it's sewer water. And there was, there was toilet paper and stuff floating around my backyard. It's very, it's very upsetting to see that this is, this what's happened. Obviously, we're requesting that the city council look into what would cause this, but I also want to bring up an additional point related to this, which is, we were, I know that when they separated the drainage system, the city told us that they're going to separate the clean rainwater drains from the sewage water drains and since that time, we've had massive flooding in our streets. Every single rain, it fills up to the point where cars cannot drive through. And I happen, the way I live on my street, I get surrounded by three puddles and if you don't take a high clearance vehicle, you can't leave your house so the rainwater goes away. We've spoken to the council, we've spoken to the city engineers about this and they combine their yellow trucks many times. The holes that drain the street are about this big, there's four of them per block, four holes this big. All it takes is a few grass clippings, it plugs it all up and then it completely floods. So I'm bringing this up because there's an additional financial burden after paying for this bond, after paying high mileage, after paying all the extra things we pay for in Southfield and paying the highest water, combined water sewer rates out of any city in this area, we have the highest rates. On top of that, we are having damage to cars. I run a service that helps people out with their cars, their issues. Lots of people called in, they went through the puddles, it ripped off the bottoms of their cars, it's that deep. You try to make it through, you think, I'm going to get a little speed so I can actually get out of my house, like go wherever you got to be, whether it's emergency or not emergency. It's ripping off heat shields and all sorts of stuff in the bottom of cars. My neighbor, her car is totaled, it got finished, it just, she tried to go through a puddle, it's too deep, now she's out of car. So we have people out basements, we have people out cars, and all this while we're paying for a service that I don't, I think a lot of people are frustrated, they're paying so much for a service that we're not getting. So that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Anton.
I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak. Not only am I speaking on my behalf, but some of my neighbors who chose not to speak. I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, but just something, we live at 15689 Hilton between Fairfax and the Dead End, right around town in Greenfield, and water has always been a problem for about six houses on our block. It's been constant. So my husband and I have been very diligent to do everything to prevent water from coming in. We have two sump pumps, not one, one that runs on gravity because after 2014, when the entire area in the city flooded, we said we better get something without electricity. So now we have two sump pumps, we've raised the grade around the house, our house. In addition, we even dug underneath the house to take out the silk and the buildup underneath the house. And once again, as a gentleman mentioned earlier, 2022, right after you, the sewer lines were put in and everything was great, we had major sewage in our basement. Our basement was totaled. The supervisor came running out, he took pictures, he goes, I can't believe this, the city just spent millions of dollars to repair this. That night, on our block especially, the restoration team came out that night to repair everything. When we, when we filed a claim with the city, they rejected it. They said it's not our fault. Once again, we've had two more floods. This one in our home was worse than 2022. Our basement is totally demolished, we ripped up all the flooring, the walls, even ceramic tiles had to be ripped up. And the question is, we do our due diligence to take care of our property. If we leave out our garbage cans too long, we don't mow our lawn, we are fined, right? So the question is, what is the city of Southfield doing about it and what is their responsibility? So to me, it's extremely, extremely frustrating and I feel like sometimes when we call and try to get answers, we're given the runaround. When a worker came to our house the night of the flood on Thursday, he says, oh, it's Oakland County's problem. Another person came to the street to see what we needed, five days later and said, oh, someone stole the manhole cover. And then a third party had told me... And then a third party had told me, "Oh, your sump pump is not working with the new system." Well, if our sump pumps were working, where was the notification four years ago? And since then, we've had numerous rain. On Friday, we had a deluge of water coming in, and we had no water in the basement. So Houston, we have a problem. Someone is not paying attention to what's going on with the sewer lines and the water lines in the city of Southfield. And I think it's time for the city to step up, not only take responsibility to make, make sure we have a strong infrastructure, but also to take financial responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a business meeting, and we should not be, and give everyone, every speaker, the respect that they deserve, and not make comments while they're speaking. Our next speaker is Shantia Perry. Sorry if I said that wrong.
Good evening. I don't want to get up here and reiterate what everyone has said, but at this point, we just need you guys to step up. There's something that has to be done. Our taxes are extremely high, and like the other people said, when you call, you get the runarounds. It's like you don't even want to live in this city anymore. I've been doing, this is the fourth time that my basement has flooded. I have small children. No one seems to want to help us, and this is getting ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. We are losing things, and we still have mortgages to pay. But the city of Southfield, it's time for you guys to really, really, really step up. This is getting outrageous.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marshall. I'm sorry, can't, can't read the last name. Thank you.
Hi, we're up here of a different nature. Thank God that there's no water in our basement. But we're up here for property maintenance. We have a neighbor that we've been talking to since 2021, and we've been addressing a dead tree problem. We've been cutting the tree, we've been trimming the tree. It's a willow tree, and a lot of the branches are on our new roof. Not too long ago, a branch has failed and it put a hole in our roof. We had it repaired, it damaged our gutters. Their bushes are all on our fence. We just recently put up a new privacy fence, and they have the first privacy fence that was ever made. It's very slender wood, and it's rotten. It falls down a lot. We prop it back up just for my parents' sake. We've been talking, we got documentation of text messages. We got documentation where we've called and they've got no answer. They, we've offered a system in cutting a tree, and there's nothing, no cooperation, no participation. Now it's totally impacted us. Half of the tree has failed and totally damaged one of my vehicles, damaged another one. Luckily, the other two were in the garage, and nothing is done. You know, I'm a little miffed because I've been over there, and I didn't cut my grass one time, and I, they put something on my door and say, "Hey, you need to cut your grass." I'm well aware of that. And then everybody wants to tell me, you know, the insurance laws. I'm well aware of the insurance laws. I'm a licensed insurance agent, so I'm well aware of that. And I know that there, if there's a tree that's not being taken care of and it's dead, then there's liability issues. And I'm just asking Southfield, "What are you going to do?" I have a truck that's sitting in my driveway that's partially destroyed. I don't know if it can be repaired or not. I don't, I mean, I don't know. We've talked to the neighbors, they're not keeping up their property at all. There's critters running in the backyard. We don't even know what they are. We're Googling, Googling them, saying, you know, "We've never seen anything like that. The backyard is not maintained." If they, I'm surprised if they have insurance. And if they don't have insurance and they're looking to get insurance, they can't because it's uninsurable. And I'm just wondering what Southfield is going to do. You cited me for not cutting my grass, and I just want to know what, what's going to be done? Because they're impacting me financially, physically. I'm working for them. I'm cutting their bushes, I'm trimming the tree, I'm cutting the tree. We have all of you, and they're not responding at all.
Their address is 1-8430 KESH.
And ours is 1-8416.
Can you repeat both of those?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat both of them?
What's the street name?
I can't hear you.
1-8430.
KESH Street.
K-E-S-H.
And no ones came out, nobody's told us anything. Everybody's saying act of God, but I know better than that.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is Catherine Watkins.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Watkins. I reside at 24616 Templar Avenue, here in this beautiful city of Southfield. Sure. We're having issues, needless to say, water issues. I started a grassroots initiative with bringing our neighbors together by passing out flyers. We have now recently been here this evening, met with the Beechwoods people. It's time for a collective to address the issues that we hear, that we have here in Southfield. We're getting the runaround, we're getting denials, letters from attorneys saying that you're not responsible. Our homes aren't worth very much anymore. How much do you get for a home whose basement floods all the time? You don't. You just don't. The infrastructure within Southfield, we all know this, is decrepit. It's old. It needs to be replaced. People need to be able to gather together and speak about this issue, bring these issues to you so that you can work on these issues for us, the citizens of Southfield, Michigan. I ask, so much so, that we get the truth, that we know what is going on here in Southfield, and we know how to take care of it. It's not a money issue anymore. There's health issues, there's elders. We are mainly an elder city now. Elders can't do. Elders get sick, babies get sick. It's far, far, far beyond the dollar. It's our lives. Literally, for some, it is their lives. Work with us. Please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Shapiro.
Thank you very much, council, neighbors, friends. I'm not here to add my voice to the chorus of neighbors that have had damage in our basements, flood after flood. I'm not here to question the good faith of the city council and the administrators of Southfield in doing the various street repairs and all the things over the last years, I, I imagine with the best intentions. Just two items. All of our neighbors suffered worse than we did in this last flood. We, we had minor damage. I wanted to credit the city for the fact that somebody came out promptly, asked us what was wrong, followed up with sending people to clean up. They're coming again tomorrow to follow up, and they'll come again next week to follow up. I know this is a drop in the bucket, and most of our neighbors had to tear up their basements, we didn't. But you have to give credit for little things. I wonder whether it would be possible, since obviously whatever's been done over the last few years has not been working. This is not the only city that has flooding. And I'm wondering whether it's possible perhaps to have participation from some of the neighbors in a volunteer group that would invite experts on this, from other cities, from other places, who've dealt successive, successfully with these kinds of challenges, and to help the city go forward to improve our quality of life, improve the prospects of getting through these storms without flooding and damage. I personally would participate in such a volunteer group, and I'm sure there are others who would like to do the same. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening, Southfield. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident and president of Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association. If my husband was standing up here, he would tell you that tonight I had not planned to speak. However, after meeting a fellow Southfield resident about the sewer issue, I decided to add my name. It sounds like Southfield's elected and appointed officials is a lot like our piping system. Many of you need to go. With our high taxes, water rates, Beechwood Acres definitely have been fighting a cause with septic tanks and sewer lines, even predating me 20-plus years ago. Do you hear your residents? It's unfortunate that we already suffer from not having some of the things that other municipalities and communities have, whether it's a swimming pool, a downtown area, somewhere to just have a family day. But now, to have entire communities with their basements and their homes and backyards filled with sewage? We should strive to be better than this. The residents of your city deserve more than this. We elect you to wield might, to fight and be the voice of the people. So if the county is giving you problems, you have 70,000 residents who are supposed to stand in solidarity when you execute your power to be our voice to them. I'm concerned that other municipalities don't have a problem reaching out to elected officials to ask for money for their cities. Beverly Hills just got nearly a million dollars for water and infrastructure. Northwest Detroit just asked the same congressperson and received a million dollars for infrastructure. When is Southfield going to ask those who are in control for money for its people? We understand that there are elected officials asking for $100 million for projects that are held by for-profit and nonprofit city companies that were implicated in predatory property tax foreclosure. Why not ask our congresspeople for money to fix the septic tank issue? Money to fix the sewer lines? Money to fix problems that are jeopardizing and compromising the lives of your residents? Stand up. Use your voice. Be the power for the people.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jacob Isakis.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak. My name is Jacob Isakis. I reside at 15676 Hilton, between Greenfield and Fairfax. July 4th is going to mark the 40th anniversary of our moving into our home. So in essence, we've lived in our home for 40 consecutive years. The first 23 years were, as far as I was concerned, my wife was concerned, we were flood-free, flood-free, never had a flood in our basement. When there was a flood in front of the house, because we live in front of sewers, I would always go out and, you know, clean up the sewer so the streets wouldn't be flooded. But since those initial 23 years, I don't even know how many times our house has been flooded, our basement has been flooded. The first couple of times, the city, I think, took care of, you know, rehabilitating the damage. Ever since that time, what we did was, we tried to mitigate. There was one year we had two floods in the same summer, and I told my wife, "I don't want to go through this garbage again." So we, we, I don't know, we had, we adjusted the sump pump, we did some other things to make sure that sewage wouldn't backflow into our, into our basement. And we were okay for a while, but unfortunately lately, I don't know what the deal is, but we have, all this mitigation hasn't resulted in a, in a pile of beans. We've been flooded three or four times in the last couple of years. What irks me is the fact that when the city stepped in to try to take care of us, it's like they didn't know we existed. At one moment, they did, but when it came time to, "What's going on? Nothing's going on yet." Saying, "It's not our fault." That's the response that we, that we got. So it didn't take long for me to realize that talking to the city was like talking to a, to a wall. And that's an unfortunate thing, because you as elected individuals, we shouldn't come to you, you know, you should, once you see a disaster like this about to happen, you should be running to us to see if, you know, what our needs are. Unfortunately, in the city, I've never seen that happen. It's always us who has to initiate the move. The last flood, the last two floods, crazy, no reason why the city shouldn't have come seeking, you know, citizens to see what they, their needs are. You guys haven't been living up to expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing today, Keith Harris? You know, I came here today to inform people about Wendy Webster and how she's running her name on the ballot under just W. Webster, trying to be deceptive. But I'm going to get off that subject today, because I'm going to tell these people here today, don't trust Southfield. Don't trust their engineers. I've worked construction my whole life, and I've never seen engineers as dumb as this city. And I'm saying to people, we got some of the best environmental-
Excuse me, please, please be respectful.
Okay, well, we got some of the best environmental attorneys in the state. I want y'all to give my wife each and every one of your numbers, because this is an environmental issue now. Your basements have been, you, you can't use your basements. Every, your drywall got to be cut up at least two to three feet high. Your basement's got to be disinfected, if it can be disinfected. If you have tile down there or carpet down there, it's got to be removed. Do not trust Southfield. It is time now. We got four empty seats coming up next year, and we can fix Southfield by putting new people in those four empty seats. I'm asking you people, give my wife your number. We got environmental attorneys. We used them here before. They the best in the state of Michigan. These are university attorneys. Please, do not walk away trusting that you are going to be compensated or helped. This city has, has done more than what it should done as far as rigging the system against the people. When I hear about people getting 100, applying for 100 million dollar loans to fix aging buildings or construction projects that ain't even working now- to fix aging buildings or construction projects that ain't even working now, but we got people out here who need that $100 million. We got a lot of work to do, and it starts by your vote. Your vote is the only thing that's gonna help you get the money you need and get what you need. Get rid of these four people that's running for office next year. Get with my wife and us, and I guarantee you, our environmental attorneys will be on it. We will have a meeting. We're gonna do a town hall, and we don't need your permission. We're gonna do a town hall, we're gonna mobilize, and we will bring our environmental attorneys there. Enough is enough. It's time for the people, time for it to be about the people and not the elected individuals.
Our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
Good evening. I have a few concerns here. One, my concern, there's strip stores on Mount Vernon in Greenfield that's been vacant for quite some time. I guess Kroger's was the anchor store there. It's been vacant for, you know, quite some time. And, you know, I'd like to know what other plans for that area. Next thing I'd like to present, is there a notification to neighbors when there is a liquor store being opened? I've been to past few meetings, and there's been a rezoning thing for liquor stores and been approved. There's a liquor store at a gas station on 10 Mile and Greenfield, a Shell station. And I went in there to get some gas one day, and lo and behold, there's a liquor store there. You know, it's about a half a mile away from where I live. No one told me there was gonna be a liquor store there. Now I don't go there anymore. And are there any plans to open a cannabis store in Southfield? I know there is one here, but we don't need any more, just like we don't need any more liquor stores here. Do you tour the neighborhoods? I know you have ordinance people that go around and, you know, it's supposed to make sure everything's up to par in the neighborhood, but personally, do the council people drive around the neighborhoods, just take a look? You know, I'd rather be wrong, but I, you know, I've never seen. And I invite people to, you know, I live at 15641 Pennsylvania Street. Stop by, you know, I'd be glad to give you a tour and show you not only my concerns, but concerns of my neighbors. I've been in Southfield for close to 30 years now. And, you know, I wanted to live up to its reputation as being a place to live comfortably. And what I've heard so far in the meeting here, we have a lot of sewage problems, a lot of street problems, and they need to be addressed. We voted you guys in, and we want our concerns addressed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Silverstein.
Good evening. I also live at 15587 Arbor Place in Southfield, Michigan. I as well have sewer backup issues when it rains, as well as my neighbors who are here with me as well. It's gotten worse since the street was changed and repaired. During the course of conversations and emails that have gone back and forth, I received an interesting piece of information, and it says, "On a related note, to residents that have a sump pump, you are not getting the benefit of the new system that was installed until you redirect your sump flow to the new designated storm output that was provided to each lot as part of the street replacement initiative." As far as me and my neighbors know, there's no such thing. We've never been informed of such a redirect that could be done. If it even exists, we weren't told about it. And basically, what we want to know is, how are we going to get answers to these problems? We come up here, we speak, but nobody answers us back. And we'd like to know how we are going to get this taken care of. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alice Van Buren.
Good evening. My name is Alice Van Buren, and I reside at 24715 Maryland Street here in Southfield. My concern is the sewage also. This is the second time this has happened in my basement. The first time was in '22. It was kind of bad, but this time in '24 was the worst. I have asthma, and that smell has really gotten to me, coming from my basement. I have not been able to run my air conditioning unit, because every time I try, I turn it on, the smell comes through the vents. So I've just been suffering in the heat in the house. Only thing I can do is run my ceiling fans. I've lost everything in my basement. I did have some cleaning people come out. They came out Thursday, Friday, and they were out again today. They have to come back and take all the towel off the floor, because that's ruined too. I've lost everything that was in my basement, everything. This is the second time. If this keeps happening, I guess I'm gonna have to find somewhere else to move out of Southfield, because I can't keep going through this. It's ridiculous. And all my stuff that they threw out is in front of my house right now. And I'm waiting for them to come get it before it starts smelling. And the flies start circling around. I just killed two flies that came in my house yesterday from that smell outside, and the bags that's sitting in front of my house. It sit on my lawn too long, it'll kill my grass. So I hope somebody will come out and pick the old debris up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Basia Gertz. Basia Gertz. Our next speaker is Ervin Edelstein. Greg Keeler.
Why is the clock moving? Why is this clock moving? I hadn't said a thing.
Can the control room please restart the clock?
Thank you. Greg Keeler, resident city of Southfield. It is amazing that we are an age-friendly city, but yet you have all these seniors coming up here with issues and telling you about the problems of their homes. You can't play like some of you don't know about this, because in the '90s, I came before you and said this was a problem. And I asked if anybody sitting in front of me had a health license. I told you, I did. So I know how bad you are with this. Now, we're looking at another liability, because people have gone to the hospital because of what you've done? And this isn't the first time this has been talked about. You've had a town hall meeting in 2017 where all these issues were brought up, but nothing was done, nothing was fixed, didn't care. Are the residents at the top of the chart? I say no. I say S and I is, because you'll do what you have to do for them. My neighbor was told she had to tap into a non-existing sewer line. I had to get a lawyer, because nobody up in front of me would step up and say anything. This is ridiculous. You have codes, you have all these other things, but when I came and told you there's no line there, and you knew it's no line there, and you did not do what the $38 million was supposed to do? Put in a sewer line where there is none? Who do you work for? We look at, this problem has been an issue before 1999. It is 25 years later, and what have you done? You have gotten recovery money, and what have you done? Have you fixed the problem? Or have you just sat there and didn't care, because the only thing you cared about was getting their taxes? Was what money you were gonna get, but not repairs, not fixes? Are you a state representative, requested to leave Neighborhood Center Service, has a slumlord? And that's what it sounds like the residents are talking about now, a slumlord that has not painted that building in I don't know how long. Paint is peeling, mildew on the outside, holes in it, wood falling apart. This is respect y'all have for her? Nobody's saying nothing about it? Code enforcement's not doing anything? But they can find all the residents' homes and do something.
Your time is up.
Do you care about the people here?
Our next speaker is Shoshana Richelson. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening to council, to the mayor, to the city administrator, the attorney, and to the clerk, and everybody in this auditorium. I have been speaking before this council for about 42 years. I've never ran for office. I've never ran for city council. There were years when I was the only person in this auditorium. So to see that people are here today and engaged in the process, I'm so happy, so honored, and so humble. But the facts and the truth matter. The city of Southfield does not, and I'm going to repeat again, does not foreclose on houses. You have a certain amount of time to pay your taxes, and once it goes to the county, then you work out any arrangements with the county. I keep hearing this lawsuit that came up, that was talked about. That lawsuit included Southfield, but Southfield was relinquished from the lawsuit because they don't foreclose on houses. The issue was with Oakland County. So if you're gonna get up here to this podium, make sure you tell the truth and say what the truth is. I'm sad that every single homeowner in here is going through what they're going through with their basement, but it doesn't sound like it's an elected official issue, because they're not the contractors. It sounds like the issue is with the contractors and whether or not people that work in those departments are doing the proper oversight. So I'm going to appeal to the city that I love, and I've been around for almost 42 years. We need to go after those contractors. We need to find out what materials they're using to make sure they're LEED-certified type materials, state-of-the-art, so that our residents don't have to keep going through this. But you get more flies with honey than you do vinegar. Every single city in the entire state of Michigan, which is 83 counties, has some kind of issue, because we are an aging state. And the only thing that we can do is support the city and to try to see what we can do as residents to help them out so they can do their job. I'm not downplaying any issue. I'm not downplaying anybody's experience, because it all matters. But what I'm saying is, instead of criticizing the city, what can we all do to make this a better city? That's all I want to say.
Thank you. That concludes our communication portion. I would like to point out, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Ryan, is here. And there is a sheet in the back. We do ask that you make sure that your address is on the list if you had any type of water in your basement, so the city can do a proper inspection and ensure that we have all the addresses that were affected. Mr. Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I also wanted to say, the program that I believe it was Mr. Simon, Ari Simon, brought up, has actually been in process about where you can hook up your storm drain, I should say your gutter, and your-
Sump pump.
Sump pump to the front. That program actually started in 2017. And if you're interested in it, please contact the building department and start the process. So, but please, if you haven't signed, please sign so we can go check your area. We're going to do both a check of the top of your area and your pipes, and we may need to check your individual services, find out what exactly went on. Because the thing to remember is, while we're a community of 18,800 households, this happened to only 37 households.
Excuse-
Well, it's been reported by 37-
Excuse me, please, please let- Please let him speak.
Okay, that's why, right now, we've only had 37 people reported. That's why I'm asking you, can you please go up there and sign so we can check and make sure? Because if it is a much further problem, we need to know it and check on it. We can't do it in the back. You guys have been wonderful, taking your own personal time and coming here and speaking. And we're more than willing and wanting to work with you, because we don't want you to go through that. Because, yes, as many of you may not believe, we know we work for you. So if you can help us out, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't know. Okay. All right, we'll give them a minute to leave. Oh, we need the signup sheet in the back of the room, please. We need it on the table outside. It, yes. The signup sheet will be on the back table. All right, council. We'll continue on with our meeting. We have three ordinances to enact.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1788, the request to rezone 6... I'm sorry, 8.6 acres of land at 28600 Lacerole from RM multiple family to R2 single family.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to enact ordinance number 1788. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Lee, we need at least one door open. I'm sorry. Do you have to stay? All right. Motion passes. Can I be?
I can do B.
I can't, I can't really hear.
You want me to do B?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance 1789, Mishda Payment in Lieu of Taxes Pilot for Wellspring.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1789, the Mishda Payment in Lieu of Taxes for the Wellspring Project. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1790, Amendment of Ordinance Establishing a Payment in Lieu of Taxes for John Grace Arms.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to enact ordinance number 1790, the Amendment of Ordinance Establishing a Pilot for the John Grace Arms. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is kind of loud.
We need more than one purse sheet out there.
Well, they're probably arguing with you. Patrick probably needs some help as well. All right, we'll give it one minute to quiet down.
He's about to shut the door again.
Good evening. So as part of the city's ongoing stormwater utility study, select engineering department staff were provided access to NERMAP. And we found it to be an extremely helpful tool in our daily work tasks. NERMAP is a web-based subscription service which provides high-resolution vertical and oblique aerial imagery that's updated three times per year. Plus includes some easy-to-use tools for measuring and for drawing when we need to. We did... That was just a temporary access we had as they needed that information for the stormwater study. But we have now budgeted funds to be able to extend that for another year. A 12-month cost has been budgeted for $13,080. NERMAP would be available to city staff in all departments. We'd probably just introduce that to the departments that we felt that would be useful, and we can do a little bit of training. It's pretty easy to use, though. It's recommended that your honorable body authorize the NERMAP service subscription expenditure this evening by adopting the attached resolution which authorizes the mayor and clerk to sign the product agreement on behalf of the city after it's been reviewed by the city attorney.
Mr. President? I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the product agreement with NERMAP on behalf of the city after review and approval by the city attorney.
Service. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion and presentation regarding a proposal to add beer, wine, and liquor to a new gas station under development at 28681 Northwestern Highway.
Good evening. This is Petitioners Tier Management LLC, Special Land Use Request 24-0012, for discussion purpose only. You may recall that council approved construction of a new gas station at 28681 Northwestern Highway near Franklin Road. Hours of operation are 24 hours. And at the time that the gas station was approved, the beer, liquor, and wine sales was not approved on the books. So they are coming back specifically to request beer, wine, and liquor sales. Current zoning is B3, consistent with the future land use plan of regional mixed use. This is a map of surrounding properties that also sell beer, wine, and liquor. And then the location itself is under construction. This is the approved landscape plan. And you may recall, this is the particular gas station that had the mural art on the pavement. This is an indication of the interior floor plan where they proposed to sell beer, wine, and liquor. These were approved elevations. And I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up. Now, there's no approvals tonight, but this is a consideration for the beer, wine, and liquor alcohol sales that'll come back to you on July 15th for a public hearing. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up and introduce yourself and if you have anything else to add.
My name is Adam Tier. I'm the owner of the new station that's gonna be built.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Adam Tier. I am the owner of the...
One minute. Can I ask the officer in the back? Can you ask them to...
No, you can't shut the door.
We can't shut the door, but if you can ask them to move further away from the door, it would be helpful. Okay, let's try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Adam Tier. I am the owner of the gas station on Northwestern Highway of Franklin. That's gonna be built. And this is my attorney, Joe Chalow. And what else do I need to do?
Nothing. If you have any questions for Mr. Tier, we'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Again, this was already pre-approved. Did this one add to their site? Any questions? Okay. Oh, Councilwoman Banks? Oh, okay. We have no questions.
So through the chair, a public hearing has been scheduled for Monday, July 15th. So we'll ask the petitioners to come back at that time. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks has a question for our city clerk.
Thank you. To our city clerk, I just want to make sure that the residents and/or businesses that are within the, is it 350 or 500-foot radius, that they are notified of this change. I don't know if they've already been notified, but...
Through the chair, we notify everybody 350 feet from the property line.
But when you say "we," is it the planning or the clerk's office?
The planning department prepares the notice for the planning commission. And those mailing lists and those notices are turned over to the clerk's office to be mailed out. It's the same list. And we have to do it 15 days prior to the public hearing. So it should have been already in the paper, and the notices would have gone out. The state law only requires 300-foot notice. City's practice is 350 feet. We also notify any registered homeowners associations or groups in the vicinity. We publish it in the paper. We put it on the city's website, and it's put on the clerk's bulletin board.
No, and I understand and I respect that. It's just the last time we talked about liquor and gas stations, there was a gentleman in this area that accused this body of not receiving notifications, being notified, et cetera, et cetera. And I believe they're within that 300 or 350 line. So I just want to... I don't want to be accused of that again. So I just want to ensure that the people are notified prior to the public hearing. That's all.
If there's somebody that has an address, we can verify who got notified and who didn't and double-check the notice requirement.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal for the construction of a dog park, paths, and other improvement at Loser Woods Park.
Thank you through the chair. We'll do the introduction. I know members of the Parks and Rec Department are here. The next item is PSLU 24-0013, as well as PSP 24-00010. Petitioner: City of Southfield Parks and Rec Department. This is at the current Loser Park, Loser Woods Park at 27577 Loser Road. Existing zoning is R4 residential. And it's to prove the existing park by adding a dog park, pass, and other improvements at Loser Woods Park. Site is zone R4. Future land use designates the property as public parks and recreation. Existing site, there is existing pathway that connects the neighborhood to the school. There's an existing gravel lot. And it's basically open green space at this point with some trees. The overall concept plan is to add a phased development for a dog park that's fenced in, improvements to the parking lot, and pedestrian circulation on the site. Phase 1 will include the entrance gate controlled to the dog park and half of the dog park fenced-in area, as well as parking and accessible pathways. This is a detail of how the dog park entrance gate will be located and situated, as well as some very free parking spaces in connection to the public sidewalk system on Loser. Some details. And then Phase 1 of the pathway, the existing concrete pathway will be removed and a wider eight-foot pathway will be reinstalled to current standards. And then that pathway will be extended to connect to the synagogue, as well as the main public walk. I believe the existing berm will be removed, and there'll be some landscape removals and additions to the site. So with that, I'd like to ask Representatives Ms. Terry Fields and her staff to come up and talk about more details of the proposed park.
Good evening, council. Here with me tonight, Mike Donilon from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, who will just do a brief overview with a couple of the amenities. And then we'll be here to answer any questions that you might have, as well as Steve Griffith.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me? That doesn't happen very often. Mike Donilon from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark is here. He's gonna go over just a couple of the amenities and highlight them. And Steve Griffith is our park superintendent. He's here as well, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, councilmen and women. Again, Terry Fields introduced me. I'm Mike Donilon with Hubble, Roth... Mike Donilon with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. And the dog park, the Phase 1 that we're looking to construct, begin constructing, is a gravel parking lot with some accessible parking and a concrete sidewalk going up to the main entrance area. It has a common space in that entrance area. It has a bike rack, has a dog wrench station, and also a porta-john, accessible porta-john in there. And then entering into the dog park, you are in a unleashed area. There's an unleashing area there. The first gate that you enter through, and then that's where you take your dogs off the leash. And then what I always affectionately call the launching zone through the two gates that you see north and south on the drawings. Those are the dog entrance areas. And that material that you see in a radius shape there is kind of like your ball field clay surface. It's the wear points where the dogs, you know, actually wear down the grass. It's hard to keep the lawn in those areas. So it's a clay surface, and then the lawn surface will be exterior of that. There are two areas, Dog Area A and Dog Area B. And the system will be... Entry areas will be controlled by a key... or by a FOB system. We're still working through the details on that. But it's gonna be purchased at the Parks and Rec Department and monitored there. So with that, it's fairly simple, cut and dry. The pathways connect back over to Pacha Train and over to the school, as well as into the synagogue. And the utility plan, you can see, we're bringing in electric and communications and some stormwater improvements so that we can get the site to drain. It's a very flat site. So with that, I'll entertain. We'll entertain any questions you have, operationally, design-wise, or other.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I'd just like to state for the residents and audience, we've been studying this for two years, so that's why we don't have any questions. So we've gone through all the details. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
And I'd like to concur. I'm also happy to see that this is coming forward. We've been talking about this for a long time. I don't need an answer tonight, but once this is approved, I hope that we are all on the same page internally as far as who's going to be licensing the animals that can go into the dog park, who's gonna be issuing the FOBs, et cetera, et cetera. So once this park is open, all of that is clear. But again, we don't need it... I don't need an answer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
If I'm looking at this correctly, you're setting aside three handicap spaces?
Correct, for the first phase, yes.
Okay. I think we need more. I know there's a ratio, but given our population, we seem to run out of handicap spaces. I'm just throwing that out there.
We'll look into that.
All right.
Okay. The only comment I had, and I think this is great, as was mentioned, we've been talking about this for a while, and I know this is a much-needed improvement into this field. When we... The question is, based on some construction that has come up with Stevenson School, the question came up is, can the pathway be done separately from the dog park on a different timeline, so they're separated out? Because we understand now there's more of a need for the pathway to be constructed more quickly. And then the other thing is, we just need to find out... I don't need an answer tonight, but we need to find out if we are going to connect our pathways to the school as we understand there may be some changes to their plan that we may not need to connect. So if we can just make sure that before we put together a path, we do it the right way and don't do anything unnecessarily. So, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, so we will see you back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to construct a new vehicle showroom and service building at 27000 Telegraph Road. showroom and service building at 27000 Telegraph Road.
Thank you through the chair. The petitioner, GHG Detroit LLC, is here to discuss PSP 24-0009. Property located at 27000 Telegraph Road. Existing zoning is RS Regional Shopping. As you stated, to construct a new Kia vehicle showroom and service building. So it will require, the special land use was previously approved, so this is just a site plan. And off-site storage of vehicles are currently, will be located at, on West Eight Mile. And that has previously received special land use approval. Hours of operation for sales, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with services, Monday through Friday. 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they anticipate 35 to 45 employees. As previously stated, the property is zoned B3. This is the, this will be located south of the former Toys R Us building. Currently, Glassman has a pre-owned vehicle sales showroom and service.
The old Toys R Us.
What did I say?
You said south of it, as if there's room south of it.
The new, I'm sorry, the new building will be constructed south of the former Toys R Us building.
So it is, oh.
So.
Well, we think it is our own.
The lower photo that shows the mural, that was the former Toys R Us building. It's now the Glassman pre-owned vehicles. So that parking lot is where the new showroom will be constructed.
Oh, okay, where the park.
And there's, even though north is to the left, that's the relationship between the existing building and the new Glassman Kia dealership. And then we asked them to designate between required parking for customers, required used car sales, display storage area, onsite showroom, and offsite. Since they will be selling some EV, electric vehicle onsite, the fire and building department want a separate area for those cars to be pre-inspected before they're moved into the building. And then a plan for evacuation of those vehicles should the batteries catch on fire. I think this rendering really shows the prototype of what's being proposed. And it's that service bay on the right side of the screen where vehicles will be brought in and inspected and can be easily removed should there be an issue for service. With that, I'd like to invite the petitioner and his architect to come up and add anything that hasn't been previously covered.
If you can give your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Ken Moreland, 29895 Greenfield Road in Southfield. We are, I'm with Dorchen Martin. We're the architects representing the applicant. This is Michael Glassman. I'm sure that you know that the Glassmans have been a part of the Southfield business community for decades, and Michael happens to be the third generation. As Mr. Crowe indicated, they would like to construct a, an approximately 19,000-square-foot showroom with service attached. And they will have, I have had a conversation with Fire Marshal Townsall regarding the evacuation of the EV and the inspection, which was enlightening. I'm still going to try to have an actual meeting with him to sit down and go over their plans. They, he had indicated that they want to be able to extricate a vehicle if it does catch fire quickly from the building if they can. So we have positioned two EV service bays with exterior overhead doors so that they can pull in, Mr. Townsall indicated that the city or there would be some tow trucks, emergency tow trucks either purchased or leased in order to be able to do that. And he had requested that there be a space adjacent to the parking that would allow the tow truck to maneuver and be able to wench the car out of the facility if need be. There was also a discussion with him regarding the storage of the EV batteries. And we have provided for a concrete or masonry room for them to store it within the facility. From community to community, it seems that this is all new territory with regard of how to best store these batteries. In Southfield, they had indicated that they wanted a, at least a two-hour enclosure around, and that's what we'd be providing. I think that with the advent of the different type of batteries, hopefully that'll become less and less of an issue. I guess with that, I would open up to any questions you might have regarding the.
If I could through the chair, Mr. Moreland, when you say two-hour, you mean two-hour fire-rated?
Correct, a two-hour fire-rated enclosure around where they're storing the batteries, up to the deck.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
I think this is a nice complement to the area. Thank you. To our planner, there is a road, I believe, behind this location that, I'm not sure how far down it goes, but I just happened to drive down it, and then it dead-ends. And it looks like it's supposed to open up into one of the dealerships, but dealerships have put dumpsters there. So even if someone tried to get out, you can't get out. Can someone check to make sure?
Yeah, I can speak to that, and I know Mr. Glassman can as well. That is a private road that's under consent agreement for the office building behind. And at one time, there was a cross-access easement agreement. I know that the Glassmans had pursued possibly purchasing or leasing additional space there. But that is a private road, and those are separate parcels. And that gate, I believe, is in there just for emergency purposes only. And Mr. Glassman or Mr. Moreland may be able to expand or expound on that. But I know early on, when we were talking with them a year or so ago, they did explore possibly acquiring or leasing additional land because Kia was making some demands about having a separate building. And they were trying to figure, figure out how to best situate that. Now, I'll defer to them to speak anymore on that issue.
But shouldn't they, shouldn't there be a gate at the entrance to that road so no one, like myself or someone else, can drive back there? Because, you know, when you drive back, it dead-ends, and I had a hard time turning around. You're either hitting a dumpster, you're hitting a wall. There was nowhere to turn. So I went back, and I'm like, why is this even open? And to the planner, I didn't see any sign that named a road.
It's, again, through the chair. It's a private drive that provides access to the office buildings in the back. And at one time, where the New Soul Garden and the, where the Tiger Market is, they were all part of condominium development under consent to all share access from that road. So that's not a public road, that's a private road.
Okay.
Michael Glassman, 27000 Telegraph Road. The gate that you're referring to is not even on our property. It's closed. That's next to us, the Southfield Chrysler Building. We've tried to find different ways to work through that road and possibly get additional property, but nothing's happened as of now.
And I thought it was the Chrysler property, not yours, but I wasn't sure. And at one point, correct me if I'm wrong, years ago, that drive used to go onto the Chrysler property and then went to the service drive, correct?
Yeah.
So now what they've done is, they've put a dumpster right where you used to be able to turn years ago. I'm just saying, I think it's a dangerous situation and something that we should check into. I don't know, private road, no private road. Either a gate should be near the Oriental Stores, because that's where I was. And when I exited, I'm like, oh, I wonder if this is still open to go to that road. Thank you.
You know, my recollection of this had to do with vandalism and theft as to why it was closed.
But then we should close it closer to the, like, the entrance point, which I.
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Until 12 was a little different. You used to be able to go all the way through the back there at one time, as I remember it.
I don't, I don't think that's the, is that the road? I don't think that's the road. Because there was nowhere to go right. There was no road there.
Yeah. Well, the property has changed, but originally it did connect to the mall, as I remember it.
Right, right.
And there was a theft problem.
Right, I remember that. Where's the road?
This is, this is where you're coming in off the service drive and you're going back into the office building. And here's the private road, and I believe this makes you're talking about it being cut off here.
Maybe that's where it's cut off now, but I'm saying it should be cut off down at the bottom, because there's, once you get on that road, there's nothing there.
Well, there's these office buildings that have access. These office buildings are occupied.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. I don't remember office buildings there, but I'll go drive it again.
Riverside Office Buildings, I think they're called?
I don't think it's that far.
Sounds like you're saying the dumpsters need to be gone.
No, it's not that far down. I'll go drive it again.
Any other questions? What do you plan to do with the current Kia building?
We're looking at different options to possibly, for a future franchise or, depending on the requirements, move an existing one in there. But for right now, dealing with the manufacturers has a set of challenges. Each one is very unique, so we're just trying to work with one at a time to see what, see what the requirements are.
Okay. Council, any other questions? All right, so this will again come back on the 15th for a public hearing. All right, thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to construct a product storage building accessory to the existing grocery store, Grove Kosher Market at 25155 Greenfield Road.
Thank you through the chair. Again, discussion purposes only, but there is a proposory zoning, PZR 24-0004, as well as a site plan, PSP 24-0008. The petitioner is Witmore Investments. Existing zoning is B3 general business as well as vehicular parking. Proposed zoning is to make the entire site B3. General business to construct a product storage building as an accessory to the existing grocery store. I believe back, back when this originally was developed, there was the thought to put vehicular parking along the perimeter of the grocery store to prevent any further encroachment and building expansion. But this, this aerial kind of indicates outside storage. This has been a perennial code enforcement issue. And in order for them to clean up some of the ticketing issues, they are proposing to build an exterior accessory storage building to take care of their pallets, their cardboard debris, as well as some inventory storage for the grocery store. Existing conditions, there's a knee wall located at the end of the cul-de-sac that wraps around to the rear of the property. And adjacent to the immediate neighbor to the west, there's a six-foot wood dog ear fence. These photos kind of indicate some of the outside recyclable storage that's in violation of city ordinances. And here is a proposed layout. In order to do that, in order for them to build the accessory building, they need to rezone the gray areas which are designated vehicular parking to B3. And then here's a landscape plan with the proposed storage facility. After talking to the neighbor who suggested that he would prefer a 10-foot-high decorative residential fence as well as some additional landscaping, they've came up with a plan to replace the deteriorated six-foot wood fence with a 10-foot as well as doing some arborvitae landscape screening to help buffer the neighbor. There's a detail of that. These are just some building elevations. I think these perspectives speak more towards what's being proposed. Approximately a 24-foot-high storage facility with access on the west side. Again, the layout. Now, we did, we did review the survey that was provided to us by the engineer. And the proposed location of the fence as well as the landscaping is actually on the Grove's property. May appear to be on the other side of the wall and being on the residence, but they have approximately five to eight feet of their property. So they have, they'll be constructing the fence and the landscaping actually on their property, even though it's on the neighbor's side of the wall. So with that, if the petitioner's here or his representative, if you have anything to add, and then the council may have some questions for you.
Good evening. Richard Goin, Segal Tunnel Association Architects, 29200 Northwestern Highway, Southfield. I do have a representative from Grove if you need to ask any questions that I might not know. But right now, I think Mr. Crowe went through it pretty, pretty well, what's going on with this and what we're looking at doing. So I guess if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Council, any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Said product rest, uh, storage, is it products for sale? What type of products?
Yes, it would be, yeah, products for the store that are being sold in there. So there would be rack storage inside the building to, for their deliveries to be stored in there. And then as they need them into the store, they would move them into the store to, for resale, so.
And that's the only thing that would be inside of there?
There might be some from, they have a compactor which does the majority of their trash, and then they have a baler. So there might be some, you know, bales from the baler for cardboard and stuff that gets stored in there until, until it comes and the trash comes and gets picked up.
Any dry goods or can, I mean?
Anything for the grocery store, yeah. It could be any, anything in the store.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I had a couple, I had the, the neighbor directly behind us had some questions. The, and Mr. Crowe, thank you for verifying that the fence is, so the current fence that is there is on the property of the market.
Yes, according, according to the engineer plans, their property extends approximately five feet past the current wall.
And that would still have to go to the zoning board for the 10 feet?
They have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to go up to 10 feet. Six feet is permitted by Wright. That doesn't mean the ZBA will grant a waiver to 10. It could, could reduce it to eight. But it was based on the request of the neighbor to go to 10 feet. And so they're trying to honor the neighbor's request.
Okay. The neighbor had some concerns. Hopefully, this will address them with the workers throwing food over his fence, cigarette butts, garbage.
I would think with a 10-foot fence, that would solve some of those, those issues, so, yes.
Okay. And then he also mentioned that sometimes due to some of the garbage or other things that are outside, that there is a, his words, foul rancid odor in the summer due to the, all the garbage. Will that be solved with this?
Yeah, because that'll be indoors instead of being stored out back in the open like that, so, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry? Yes?
Again, I know originally, this is, this is a solution to some perennial code violations for the, as you had said, bundled recyclable cardboard. You're talking now garbage. And then you're talking about additional products, excess inventory that will be moved in the store. Do you have interior separation between the garbage and the recyclables and, and the food products that are going to be stored in there? I don't think we got a floor plan for the inside.
No, because, yeah, the recyclables is mostly cardboard and wood, so there really isn't much of a, you know, wouldn't really need a separation between the two.
All right, but I, I thought I heard you say that the odors that would be caused by the dumpster would be taken care of by having the stuff moved inside, so.
Well, it would be compact, anything that would be, odor would be compacted. So all that material would be in the compactor out the north side, north corner of the building. That's already dealt with. So the only thing trash-wise out there would be, you know, wood pallets, cardboard all compacted up.
But no actual garbage will be stored in this building?
No, no actual garbage. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I misunderstood.
Interfered that and misspoke. No, there is no actual garbage going in there, other than cardboard, wood.
So through the chair, what I'd ask is, this is coming back in two weeks. Maybe just provide us a, a simple layout of how you're going to store stuff inside the building and what that material is.
Sure.
Thank you.
The other question I had, Mr. Crowe, is this is, do they need any other zoning board waivers for setback?
Mr. Payson's going to check our, we have that in our.
It looks like they're 10 feet from the residential.
Yeah, so the rear setback is another, is the second waiver. So the height of the fence and the rear setback, those are the two waivers that would be required. 15 is required and 10 is proposed, so they need a five-foot waiver.
Okay.
Is there going to be additional lighting back there, or?
Just, just between the buildings. So we'd have some security lighting on the east side of the new building, so it'd be lighting up between the two.
And will that affect the?
So we're not bouncing light onto neighbors and residential areas, so, yes.
And inside, is there some type of pest control? Because you're talking about goods you're storing?
Yeah, it'd be similar to what they're doing, you know, with the rest of the store, so, yes.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, we will see you back in two weeks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we are going to skip to item G. Presentation, discussion, and action regarding, or no action, but regarding the zoning ordinance text amendment for the marijuana sales hours.
Yeah, through the chair, this item was vetted through the legislative committee at the request of some of the petitioners to consider reviewing the hours of operation for marijuana sales for both medical marijuana provisioning centers and adult-use marijuana establishments. We did a survey of adjacent surrounding communities to see the beginning and ending of their hours of operation. Currently, on Saturdays and Sundays, Southfield maximum is 6:00 PM. And many of, as you can see on this table, many of the adjacent communities are between 8:00 and 10:00 PM. What, based on our research and study, and at the request of the provisioning centers, we are recommending that the hours of operation be extended from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, and on Sunday be extended to 9:00 PM as well. Now, the two previously approved provisioning centers have a set hours of operation based on their special land use approval. This would only give the ability for them to request extending the hours, and then any future provisioning center would have to comply with these, these hours. So again, based on our research of adjacent communities, based on the request of these provisioning centers, and having vetted this through the process, this is what we're asking the counsel to consider, making a text amendment to allow for expanded hours on Saturdays and Sundays.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counsel Manhans?
Did you say that the other operations had the same time, or they, they haven't requested that time?
The, the two existing are capped at the 6:00 PM, because that's the way the ordinance was established. They are requesting to go to 9:00 PM. And that is to be consistent as, as well as competitive with the neighbors, who, many of which go to, from 8:00 to 10:00 PM is their extended hours on weekends.
Now, you mean neighbors, the people within Southfield?
The Berkeley, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Madison Heights, Pleasant Ridge, Pontiac, Royal Oak, Wald Lake, and Royal Oak Township.
Thank you.
Counsel Manhans?
Thank you. Didn't we just change their time not too long ago?
No, ma'am. What, what was, what was approved was what we have on, on the books. And we, we did talk about it at a legislative committee. It went through planning commission. We said we would bring it back to counsel for further, for further discussion. So this is at the point where we're discussing whether or not.
Okay, I know I recall having the conversation.
Yes, this started out a couple months ago at the request of the.
I just thought I remember thinking something about the six, and I was saying to myself, why aren't they just asking for the nine? I'm not opposed to it, however, just for the record, I hope this is it, you know, that this appears to be, you know, nine to nine every day for retail. I, I certainly wouldn't want to see it open any later than 9:00 PM, but I could live with the nine to nine.
And again, we, we try to be reasonable, as well as being competitive with other communities as far as their hours of operation.
Okay, I just, I just had to comment on that, because I remember having, and I guess it was in legislative committee. That's all I had.
Well, I'd also, when we, we had a study session, we, the planner asked for what we would be comfortable with, should it come back. And I think that's also one of the discussions that we had, because we wanted to see what the surrounding communities do. I also wanted to point out, and I mentioned this to the, to the planner earlier today, I was catching up on my old Crane's newspapers. Michigan, per capita, has the most, has the highest marijuana sales. And then at the federal government level, they're also talking about lowering the classification of marijuana to, similar to Tylenol 3s, or more like a lower-level narcotic. So, you know, this is unfortunately here to stay. And even in discussions with one of the cannabis companies, they even said, they may ask to go to nine o'clock, but they don't plan to stay open probably past eight o'clock. They said in the summer especially, it's hard when surrounding communities are open till nine, and they're closing at six, and it's still light outside. And so there are, you know, there, sometimes it does, even if we're not necessarily fans of marijuana in general, that's the, unfortunately, the nature of the world now, where this is, if Michigan is per capita, you know, California's number one, but per capita, Michigan out, is larger than, sells more per capita than California. So it's unfortunate, it's one of those, you know, do we stay up with the times and do we, you know, move?
Through the chair, I, I think we also, we tend to forget that this was on the ballot, and I believe more than two-thirds of the registered voters were in favor of the original marijuana, medical marijuana laws. So we just been, we've been incrementally reviewing this, cautiously implementing and testing it as, as we've progressed through the caregiver law, the medical marijuana law, and now the recreational marijuana.
And I just wanted to point that out, because it's, I, I know sometimes we have, you know, it's been expressed here, you know, we're not necessarily in favor of, you know, maybe even us, you know, partaking in their goods. But, you know, this is what the citizens of Southfield want. But I do want to dispel, I did hear a rumor that somebody mentioned, I wanted to dispel the rumor, that this does not allow anyone to consume on the premises. That was a rumor floating around. I do want to, this is strictly to change the hours. You're still not allowed to consume anything on premises of these businesses.
Or, or in the public.
Or, or, right, you can do it in your, in your front yard.
Privacy of your home.
Correct. There was that rumor floating around, so. Counsel Manhans?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this. Are we able to give some type of report as far as what these tax dollars are doing, you know, as far as like education to youth about drug prevention and all that? Do we, when will we be able to have some type of report?
I think Mr. Zorn had at least a preliminary number of what, what the initial tax revenue was. And then, I don't know if, who can respond to how that money's being.
Maybe in the near future. As we.
Being used.
I appreciate that. As we continue to add more to the benefit of the owners and, and all of that, I'd like to see how it benefits the residents as far as what we're doing with those tax dollars, to be able to show, you know, how we're using it against drug prevention and things of that sort. So if we could kind of get a summary report, I'd like to see that.
You got it.
Yeah, we're just, we're just having a little sidebar, that the provisioning centers can come up with a community plan for how that money gets distributed. And, and I, again, maybe this is better for us to do some research and come back to you with appropriate answers, but.
I just think anytime we're giving more on this, it would benefit the community to see what we're doing with those dollars.
And again, we're still, the way the formula works and the way existing land use is, we're, we're kind of capped at three, even though we allow up to five.
Whenever we can, I'd like to, I appreciate it.
You have a question, Councilman Hicks?
Yeah. So the petitioner requested the initial timeframes, correct? Do they have data that shows money through Friday between six and nine, how much traffic they get?
Well, through the chair, they specifically were talking about, on Saturdays, they continue to get people, patrons to come to their property. They have to actually gate off their parking lots, because people are assuming that they're open till 9:00 PM because of the surrounding communities. We can see if they can provide some data to us before they come back in two weeks. But it was, again, I think when this was initially established, they were comfortable with the initial hours of operation. But now that they've been open for over a year or so, this is the, what they're observing is that they're the only ones that are closing earlier on, on Saturdays. To Mr. Councilman Mandelbaum's point, Sundays, they're probably not going to stay open as late, but they just want to have the option of staying open later. But the demand that is being observed, because they have onsite security and cameras, is, a, a number of people are continuing to come on Saturday nights between 6:00 and 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Counsel Manhans?
Do these stores have online ordering or order pickups?
I, I believe the, the state law does allow for a drive-in pickup. But then they have, they have their, sales associates have to come out and verify. It's kind of like a prescription pickup. So there's, there's a process for ordering and verifying the licenses, and they can bring it out to a designated spot. That's not changing with, with this provision.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, so again, this will come back for a public hearing next week, or, sorry, two weeks. All right, then we have presentation and discussion regarding another zoning ordinance text amendment for security fencing.
So with the, there's been, there's been a number of issues in the last several years, probably going back to 9/11, both domestic and foreign terrorism, as well as, as active protesting, where people are breaking in on, on properties. And we have a number of our sensitive facilities, including communications and utilities, that have been ramping up security measures, and their normal fallback is to put up barbed wire fencing. And we only allow barbed wire in industrial districts, and it has to be at least seven feet high. And we've been working through our overlay development district, where we have a little more flexibility and other creative measures to allow for a higher security fence, but a more decorative fence. And as I pointed out earlier, if, if an applicant wants to go above six feet, they have to go and appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's an additional six weeks' process. So what we're asking for is administrative approval of eight-foot-tall fences for uses requiring enhanced security measures. So the Water Authority, Transformers, database areas, communications. Fox Two News has just recently upgraded their fencing because of some break-in issues. And Mr. Payson has put together a number of zoning waiver requests for fences for TV stations, communications, wireless, Great Lakes Water Authority, and so forth, where they have to go and ask for an additional two-foot to four feet in height for these heightened security issues. We have been working with them to put a more decorative style of security fence in. The upper center is a non-climbing fence, and then we have other decorative fencing types with, with pointed tops that are more ornamental in nature. And we would like to amend the ordinance to define what ornamental security fencing is, six feet and higher, with anti-climb features, including post pickets that bend outward, or have spikes on the tops, difficult-to-climb welded wire mesh and similar. And allowing us to do this administratively, instead of making the businesses go through a six-week process. So that's basically what we're proposing. Again, this is in response to heightened security issues with our sensitive communications and utility companies. Any other request above six feet would still go to the Zoning Board of Appeal for a waiver.
Anything over six feet residential, or in general?
In general, other than industrial, if you want to go above six feet, you have to go get a waiver. But we're trying to at least, at least for the administrative approval for security-related issues, to be able to do that administratively, so there's not a six-week delay or longer.
In any zoning.
In any zoning district, yeah.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if you got a chance, to look at the fencing that has long been needed to be replaced on Nine Mile in front of Fox Two. As you may recall, the general manager of Fox Two has joined the DDA board. We've been trying to improve our relationship with the station. Fox News tends to be controversial, and people have gone to the station, although the content that they're concerned about or objecting to is not coming out of Southfield, Michigan. They see Fox, and there's been a couple of breaches. Someone drove into the fence. And the thing that always bothered me, regardless of the, the security issue, was the barbed wire. And the barbed wire's been there since the 1960s. It's very unattractive, and it is not permitted in our code. So Fox has committed, they have, again, they have a 40-acre site on Nine Mile. It's a 40-acre square site. The rear part of the property backs up to residential, and they've committed to replacing the whole, their entire fence, all of the barbed wire with something more attractive. To me, this just makes sense, and shouldn't have to go to the ZBA. Also today, due to an. and shouldn't have to go to the ZBA. Also today, due to another issue, I was down at Eight Mile and East Street at the Great Lakes Water Authority. You may recall that they built new reservoirs. They're, it's a huge installation with pumps that supplies water to Detroit and Southfield, Farmington, Livonia, these reservoirs. And obviously, the protecting that site is extremely important because it's our water supply. And again, they've replaced the old chain-link fence with something very attractive. This just absolutely makes sense. To me, it's a no-brainer. So I, I think it should be made easier for those businesses in Southfield that really need the security. And in both cases, the Water Authority as well as Channel Two, it's attractive fencing now.
Does that mean that you will be reviewing other businesses that have had fencing issues in the past, or are you going over, is there a review of other?
We currently have, we currently review all non-residential fencing. If it's part of a site plan, it gets reviewed at the time of the site plan, but we do have a separate application. The building department reviews residential fencing. We review non-residential fencing administratively. But if the fence proposed is over six feet, then it triggers zoning board of appeals, and the way the ordinance is currently written, and we're going to talk about that next, it also requires them to come to city council because when a waiver's required, full site plan is triggered. So something as simple as a fence replacement that's over six feet could, could engender a 90-day to 120-day review process, the way our ordinance is currently written.
Okay. I was asking, because that property that Mr. Payson looked at on Eight Mile, there's a fence there that the resident said that was put up later, and it was a different type of fence, and it actually looks really horrible. And I don't think it was the fence that was there before, and it was like they just threw something up. It's not the company that's coming in to the left, but it was the other company. And I also know of another place where the fencing is horrible. And I mean, do you submit that, or how do you?
We, no, we, we look at that, and I believe in that particular case, what we concluded it was probably the previous homeowner that did some hodgepodge fencing that was installed prior to the existing homeowner and the new business moving in. Because, and again, we look at it on a case-by-case basis, and sometimes there's different property lines that we have to review.
Okay.
There was, I think there was some buffering, 50 feet of buffering there. And in those cases, the ordinance says that where a wall or fence is required, if you have a 50-foot greenbelt, then you don't have to install the wall. So there's, there's some gray area about who installed the fence and why. And because that 50-foot greenbelt, in that particular case, a fence or wall wasn't required at the time. And it just appeared to us that some previous homeowner tried to just provide some additional screening.
All right, thank you.
But we do look, we do look at those things.
And unfortunately, sometimes it's, people don't even pull permits. They just do the work themselves, and we, we only find out later.
This, obviously, this isn't going to be a universal thing. This is for those property, commercial property owners that are making a case for greater security. So don't expect everybody's going, all of a sudden, going to have an eight- or 10-foot fence. Yeah.
All right. Counsel, any other questions for security fencing? All right, so again, this will be back in two weeks for a public hearing. All right, and then our last zoning text amendment for the evening is a site plan review process.
Again, I, I think throughout the years, and more recently through some discussion on the annual reports and joint planning commission council meetings, and our specifically a renewal for redevelopment-ready. One of the best practices that they're looking for the city to adopt is to have more streamlined site plan review process. That includes slightly greater administrative review authority for the city planner, as well as planning commission having site plan review for most, not all, situations. So it's good for best practices. I believe 90% of communities do have, planning commission have final site plan approval. Now, we're not talking about special land use or zoning amendments, or anything that would trigger a community impact statement, or our overlay development district and so forth. But one project that comes to mind is the gymnastics, the proposed gymnastics building that was purely a site plan review process that seemed to got very political. And our residents do have a right to make public comment, but that was more of a permitting in the sense that if all the boxes were checked, in that particular case, no waivers were required, it was a permitted use, and they were within the ordinance. It really should get site plan approved without having delayed discussions and, and comment. And many as, we have a number of large businesses, but as you know, many small businesses come here, and they have at least a three-month process, two meetings at planning commission, two meetings at city council minimum, and they're paying for their professionals to sit here like evenings tonight. We had an hour of good public comment, but before they even get a chance to get up here, they're paying for their consultants to be here, and many small businesses don't have the luxury or time or money to pay for someone to come six times. So we're trying to propose to streamline, consolidate, modernize, and make consistent procedures and standards for site plan review and approval. And remember that counsel approves all the regulatory requirements in the zoning ordinance that we have to fact-check. As I said to you, we probably do five to six times as many administrative reviews than we do site plan reviews that counsel never sees, that we make sure meets the ordinance's requirements. And Mr. Payson has done a great job of looking at the entire ordinance that's been hodgepodge put together over 60-plus years and tried to consolidate and look at every section that deals with site plan review. And this is a summary of all the sections that would have to be amended to make one comprehensive site plan review regulations requirements. And I'm just highlighting these. These were all provided in your packet with backup material. But really, the intent is to provide a uniform method for review of proposed development plans and to ensure full compliance with the standards contained in our ordinances and other applicable ordinances, state, federal laws, to achieve an efficient use of land, to protect natural resources, to prevent adverse impact adjoining nearby properties. And the intent of these provisions are to encourage cooperation and consultation between the city and the applicant in accordance with the city's land use objectives, future land use plan, and comprehensive plans. And then we go through and talk about the applicability of when site plans are triggered, what types of uses. I think what I want to do is just to point out some of the, the specific changes. Currently, we can only do administrative approval for previously approved site plans and projects that are not accessory structures that are 1,000 square feet or less. So that knocks out a lot of projects that could be done administratively. And we also concurrently approve expansion of 25% or 10,000 square feet, whichever is less, to an existing approved plan. This would bump that up slightly to 35% of the gross floor area of a building, or 20,000 square feet. And then all art installations, building facade alterations, landscape plan revisions, parking lot circulation, and site lighting plans would be done administratively, which they currently are, but this really spells out and clarifies what can be done administratively and what cannot be done administratively. We also have a long history here where some developments took place prior to the city even becoming a city and the zoning ordinance being adopted, so there are existing non-conforming situations. And in many cases, we don't even have a site plan on file. This would allow, in certain circumstances, for, for small development, to administrative approve a plan that didn't have a previous site plan that had been around, that doesn't require rezoning or special use, and no new zoning variance approval. So an existing property that meets our compliance, that's within the threshold to add a certain percentage to their building, could be done administratively as opposed to going through the whole process. And we've had a few of those on Telegraph Road, at one gas station, I believe, at Telegraph and 10, pre-existed the city and the city ordinance, and they had to go through the whole process to add a small addition to their building. And then currently, the ordinance does allow the planner to do all site plans in light industrial, industrial, TVR, and vehicular parking. So we're, we're already currently doing that now. We'd just like to expand the authority for administrative approval for the rest of the city under certain conditions. The conditions that aren't applicable to administrative review would then go to the planning commission after recommendation from the city planner. And then the planning commission can approve, approve with conditions, or deny site plans based on new site plans for development or redevelopment for sites permitted and special use, amendments to existing site plans that do, do not fall within the criteria of administrative site plan approval, or site plans for existing developed sites that do not currently have a site plan approval on file. Counsel would continue to see site plans that are related to overlay development districts, residential unit development districts, and mixed-use corridor districts, amendments to those plans that are not, are what considered a major amendment, and any site plan that meets the threshold requiring a community impact statement. So typically, 10 acres or greater, or a certain level of traffic density or development. So any large-scale projects would still come to the council for site plan approval. These are the new submittal requirements as streamlined for the applicant. These already exist, but they're kind of hodgepodge throughout the, the zoning ordinance. It explains the administrative review process, the planning commission's site plan review process, and then the city council's site plan review process. Ultimately, all the information that you require for public health, safety, and welfare that we already are reviewing will be just done administratively. As you see the number of projects that come to you on a regular basis, we think that the majority of the site plans would be eliminated from your, your business. And we think that what this will do is, well, we know it will eliminate at least one month of review and two additional meetings, but may encourage developers who consider our process long or onerous to consider submitting that we don't even see happen. We are, have our hands tied on public notice requirements of 15 days prior to any meeting. Typically, has to be in the paper a week before that time. So those, those legislative items will continue to have public notices, and they'll continue to come to city council. But those site plans would be more streamlined and done more inconsistent with a 60-day process as opposed to a 90-day process. That's, that's really it in summary. I know there's a lot of information here, but we'd be happy to try to answer any questions that counsel may have. Our goal is, if the concurrence of the council, to consider making approvals to get this on the books by the end of the year, so that we can stay in compliance with redevelopment-ready. We know that this would, it's going to take some time to vet, and we want to at least start the discussion tonight, hold the public hearing in two weeks, take comment, and then we could have further discussion in August if the council desires. But we at least wanted to introduce this formally to the council tonight.
And just also for the, for the council, this is going to be one of the topics of discussion at our joint meeting with the planning commission in two weeks. So, Councilman Hogue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to state that this was vetted in the legislative committee over a number of meetings, where we even went through some examples of plans that we would not see any further, and how we would approach those. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that we did study this with great detail to come to a unanimous decision to support this from our committee. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Banks?
Unfortunately, whoops. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the minutes or anything regarding that meeting that the legislative meeting, committee reviewed. I'd like to see some further examples of this. How does the planning commission feel about this? I guess, I have two questions. First of all.
Well, I mean, they made a unanimous recommendation to move this forward. As council president had indicated, part of our joint meeting is for them to get some direction from the council on the things that are important to you, so that they make sure they are considering. I think they feel that this is a long time coming with regards to being redevelopment-ready and being transparent in our process. So they're, they were unanimously in favor of it. They asked a lot of questions. We took a long time studying this and debating this over several months. This has been on their agenda for several years, every time we talk about goals and objectives and, and things in our annual report. And they, they know that this is part of a best practice. So we, we're not trying to force this on anybody at this time. We, we want to make you feel comfortable. We want to answer your questions. But it was about time to at least have this earnest discussion openly, so that we can respond to any concerns or questions that you have.
So.
And we can, I certainly, I have a list, but we can prepare a few additional slides on at least half a dozen to a dozen examples in the last year that could have been resolved either administratively or at the planning commission that wouldn't have had to come to council. And I think by saying, oh yeah, I remember that one, that case was pretty straightforward, that could have been done either administratively or by the planning commission. Just a few of them was the Northwestern Highway Extreme Loans, Maple, Maple Tree Apartments, Loom Cannabis, Skills Gymnastics, Jack's Car Wash, an existing office building renovated from general office to medical office, the Habitat for Humanity New Construction, and Clara Lane, the Department of Public Works, their addition. Those could all have been done either through the planning commission or administratively. But we will be prepared to, to have further discussion two weeks from tonight.
And then the gas station that was before us this evening, if this were to be approved, would that come before council or no?
Yes, because it was, it's required to have a special land use approval. So the beer, liquor, wine is a special land use. The carryout restaurant is a special land use. The rezoning is a, is a legislative item. All of those items would continue to come to council.
Okay. If you could, I would like to see that list of items that you just stated. I think that would help me in understanding this a little bit better. Thank you.
So just, just for you know, for council, these are the, what's being proposed, and I know we talked about this in our last joint meeting with the planning commission. You know, and they also, they wanted further direction from the council because they said, well, we approved this, why did you, you know, make them change a color or do different things? So that's where we said, you know, we need to provide some more direction to, to the planning commission before we do this. But as, as Terry mentioned and to Mrs. Banks' question, the, the idea would be that anything that is straightforward site plan would be handled through either the planner or the planning commission. So anything that would, child daycare in a home would come back to council. So, anything that would, child daycare in a home would come back to council. Anything that requires, as you mentioned, a special land use, a rezoning, any type of overlay development, any, anything that does not fit in the specific box of a plain site plan. So, even, you know, we talked about the...
The Wellspring project.
Well, I'm thinking, lost the field at 12 and...
Southfield Christian. That's going to come back, because it requires special land use for athletic fields or recreation facilities in a residential district. So, those things will still come back.
Right. We're only saying for the cookie cutter, here's, we're putting the, you know, this building is approved for this site, no special waivers, nothing is required, special land use is required, that would be handled strictly through the Planning Department and the Planners Department. Does that...
Okay, okay. So, I do have a question. So, Mr. Crowe, you had indicated that example Loom would not have had to come before this body?
For their site plan, the special land use, and I believe...
It was the canopy.
Loom Cannabis was originally approved with the special land use, and then they had some facade renovations, that we made them come back before council.
They added an awning next to their building.
There was an awning, and there was some relocation of some windows and door. There was, the use, the use of the provisioning center was already approved by council. It was the administrative portion of that, of the change that we could have done administratively. So, it's not the allowance of the use, because that's a special land use. It was the site plan amendment to the original approval.
Any other questions? Councilman Hicks?
Do we have any case studies, or from other municipalities, on, who went through the process that you're proposing? Do they have any benchmarks as to when they saw, you know, improvement, or any challenges, any lessons learned that we can apply?
Well, we can look in it, we can look, work with our city attorney. I, before this job, I was a planning consultant for over 16 years, and the majority of the communities that I worked with, Planning Commission had final site plan approval. And I don't, I don't recall any specific challenges or issues with that, because they had had that on the books for so long. But we'll look into, see if we can find any metrics on that. I just know that, I believe when we did our original research, 90% of our communities have final site plan approval at the PC level. So, we're already adding an additional layer of time and review and expense to come to Southfield.
Councilman Haines?
Just real quick, how does this message get conveyed to the public?
Well, I would imagine we are working with our business development manager, Ms. Freeman, our own community relations, press release through our Planning Department, our webpage. I think this is something, if we do, if the council is finding it favorable, we should make a big bang out of it. This is a positive thing, that we should be telling our development community that we've done.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? All right. So, this will, again, will be discussed at our joint Planning Commission meeting, prior to the public hearing in two weeks. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're now up to the council portion of our meeting. Councilman Haines?
I just wanted to say a huge congratulations to Chief Baron. I was unable to attend the event, because I was at a conference for the Michigan, the National League of Cities, Michigan Black Caucus. And this conference that I attended was in Chicago, and I learned a wealth of information, and which is a lot I will be sharing with my colleagues as well, and also enhancing what I do in my role, recognizing in the role that I serve in as city council, that I am not a state representative or a state legislator, which is very important, because you know what you are capable of doing, and that is also catering to the residents in a different way. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to learn, and I also had the opportunity to share with some of the other council members what we are doing in our city that works. And one of the great things that I was able to talk about was our police department. And in hearing some of the other cities, I am grateful and thankful that I live in the state of Michigan, the city of Southfield, and that we have the chief that we do. And one lady, after I finished making my statement, she said, "Well, you are blessed." I wasn't just bragging about what we were doing, but also sharing the opportunity with the other council people about community policing. And there was another retired policeman that was there, that explained how important that was to build in relationships with your city. And while I was going, I also missed the Citizens Academy, which I thought was very instrumental in engaging our residents in this area. And I want to congratulate those people that graduated from that academy as well. I've been through that program myself, and kind of jealous, because it looked like they got plaques. I think some of us that have been there didn't get plaques when we were doing it. But this is so key and so important to keeping the residents involved. And for those of you that haven't heard about this, see the chief, and I just want to really say, I take my job serious. I don't know everything, but I am trying to learn everything that I can, and I am doing the best that I can. May not reach every resident, may not reach every situation in the best way, but coming on board here, being appointed, is no different than being elected. I still have the same job that I do. And like I said, I look at this as a full-time job, because my day job is much easier than most here, and it's nothing to say anything against him. So, I take seriously, I read, I research, and I find out information. I would just come up here, as I shared with one young lady, this is not a Miss America contest, you know, this is not a pageantry up here. And I take this serious, and I'm not offended by what anyone else says, but I just want to let you all know that I am here to do the best that I can, to serve the residents here in the best way that I can, and in working with the people here, and also with my colleagues. Thank you very much, and a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. The city of Southfield has opened up their online voting for the Southfield Photo Prize. We are encouraging everyone to take a moment and go online and vote for your favorite photo. To vote, you can simply log onto the cityofsouthfield.com website slash form slash southfield- photo-prize, and then you can click on your favorite photo, and then submit it. The photographer, the photography that receives the most overall votes will be announced at an awards ceremony. And people have taken a lot of time to take these pictures, and it's interesting how we have so much talent in our city when it comes to photography. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to view the photos, I suggest that you view them online, or you can even go to our Parks and Recre, I think it's Parks and Recreation, and they also have it on display there. Also, with the upcoming Fourth of July holiday this Thursday, please be careful if anyone in your family or your neighborhood should be shooting off fireworks, even sparklers. It just seems like they're a lot larger, the sparklers are a lot larger, and, you know, we don't want anyone in our community to get hurt this year. Thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Just real quick, we had a lot of people who came for public participation, and our, the way we communicate, or not communicate, I think we need to do a better job of explaining, as people come to the podium, we're trying to understand what their concerns are, and then follow up before responding. But I think that in lieu of the storm that we've had, there are certain things that we can put on our website to allow folk to at least reach out to various departments within the city to pose question. Or, for example, at the end of this communication segment, we ask for them to sign up to, so we can follow up with them. If we were to have that information on the website, that may have been a way to mitigate folk from coming to the meeting to voice their concern, because they have another method of expressing, other than coming to council meeting. But if we can do more to put information on our website, I think that could be a good starting point to help our constituents. Thank you.
Councilman Hoag?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to concur with my colleague, Councilman Hicks. And I'll just end to, in my statement, is just to say that we hear and acknowledge the residents and what they were going through, and our silence doesn't mean we don't care, it's just that we are directing them to the appropriate administration department, and we'll see it through to make sure that a detailed investigation is done. And so, I just don't want residents to think that we're hearing them, and that's it. I attended the celebration for our chief Baron, and one of the things that I walked away from this event was that we have an amazing group of leadership in the city. I don't know if the others noticed who was there, but we were the only city that was represented by the mayor, the administration, the administrator, deputy administrator, other police personnel, our attorney was there. That was amazing. And I'll tell you, I have family all over the state, and I told my family, "Where was Detroit? Where was the Detroit mayor? Where was this person?" We stand and we support our chief. And our chief Baron, he wasn't the first to receive that award. Chief Menefee was a recipient of it, our own council member Cruz, I believe it was stated. And it just, I'm being told another chief, I can't hear the name, but...
Chief Hawkins.
Hawkins, okay. And so, it's just amazing, and it's proof of the leadership we have in this city, but I think it tells even more that we go and support, because that entire day, Councilman Hicks and I, we were at Semeco all day. Councilman Womyn Haynes said she was in Chicago, and I mean, the others, they had something to do, but we show up. And I just am grateful to be a part, and I'm honored, to be a part of leadership that supports, especially our leaders like the chief of police and chief of fire, because they put their lives on the line. And I'll tell you, it wasn't just us, it was the people that also serve you, they were there, and there was no other city represented like us. That's all I'm going to say. And happy Fourth of July to everyone. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up to Councilman Hicks and Councilman Hoag. There was a conversation about putting information on the website for people to know to contact Public Works. For whatever reason, it didn't happen, but we did have that conversation. Public Works actually, the storm sewer area is actually my neighborhood. I've actually personally spoken to about majority of the speakers that came here tonight. Public Works went out door-to-door, even people who did not call the city to say, and asked them, "Did you have flooding? Did you have an issue?", and offered, you know, whatever we could, within our parameters, whatever we're allowed to do. They did offer assistance, they did, they did go out. Obviously, we, I don't know if they hit every home, but, because we don't know. And that was, as I was getting calls last week, as the storm was happening, I also reached out to Public Works, I was handing them addresses of people who had flooding. And there were people that called me and said, "Well, I'm not even going to bother calling the city, because, you know, I already cleaned it up, or I already did whatever I did." I said, "But we still need your address." And, you know, I can give much more examples, being that I pretty much know almost everyone that came out this evening. The city was veer, you know, is there always room for improvement in communication? Absolutely. But the city did go door-to-door, knocking on people's doors, asking them if they, on certain streets that had complaints. So, for example, if, you know, five houses on one street had called Public Works, they went out and started knocking on all the doors on that block to ask them if there had an issue. So, the city did do work. There is, again, I don't want to get into too much detail, but Public Works was out there for three to four days during the storm, and even after, making sure that the people who did call received an answer, and then whoever was in the vicinity of a lot of calls received a personal knock on the door. And we are working on getting information to all of council, but it is being gathered right now.
But, Mr. President, everything you just said was great. It would be helpful if we can say that when they're before us, because to hear these stories, and if we had to live through that, it's heartbreaking, and I appreciate what you just said. It's a little bit more that was offered to them in the beginning, maybe just right after everyone spoke. It would be helpful to just know all that, because I didn't even know that, and if that's shared with us. It's just, because it comes across as if we're cold. We can come across...
They told me that, when they came, that was their point.
But no, even people who are watching, you know.
I understand.
So, thank you, I appreciate that.
And I will say, there's a lot of other factors involved, which is why we don't want to get into a back-and-forth with speakers. It can take up the entire meeting. Each speaker, if you don't answer them, you answer others. And that's why we did make the announcements, that we did want, even before and after, we did want addresses, to make sure that we could communicate to everyone appropriately. Also, again, just, you know, make sure, with the Fourth of July holiday coming up, to be mindful of fireworks, grilling. We don't want to have any major disasters in the city. Wishing everyone a happy Independence Day. And with that, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. Thank you, Councilwoman Hoag, for what you commented about the Michigan Chronicle Men of Excellence Award for Chief Baron. It was a great evening, and it was good for us to be there and support our chief. I think it was a well-deserved honor. I wanted to mention that today was the target day for the reopening of Carpenter Lake. It did not happen. I was out there today. The park looks pretty good. There is a crew working on the restrooms that are due to open, but have been delayed because of vandalism. But there is a crew, there was, there were plumbers out there today. They, a plumber told me that he expects to be finished tomorrow, and I didn't get a chance, she's left the chambers, but I did want to talk to our Parks and Rec Director, which I'll be speaking with tomorrow. A lot of people have asked, and that's why I'm bringing this up, they miss Carpenter Lake, they love going there, and we want them back, so. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. I just had two quick other announcements. One was that our own executive lieutenant, Teresa Young, was on Fox Two News, talking about fireworks safety, so you can check that out on the Fox Two website. And also, today, we started a new, we started with Priority Waste, a new garbage hauler. So, we would like everyone to be patient. Your day, your pickup day does not change, but there may be fluctuations in the time of pickup. of pickup. But we ask that you put out your, again, put out your trash and recycling no earlier than 4:00 PM the day before, and no later than 7:00 AM the day of your pickup, because we don't know, as they may change some of their routes, the time of your pickup may change, but the day of your pickup will not. So please be patient while we make this transition, which started today. Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. My first item of business, I'm requesting an extension on the John Grace Purchase Agreement. This is the Third Amendment. It extends the agreement to March 1st. The agree, this is essentially requested, we're still going through the financing period and waiting for federal approval on our, on our historic preservation tax credits. We originally were hoping to close midsummer. And that took us till the end of August and the six-month extension to, to March 1st. We believe we'll have all of our final approvals from the feds at that point. The resolution is requesting that the mayor and city clerk authority to sign the Third Amendment and Restatement of the Purchase Agreement by and between John Grace Arms Limited Dividend Housing Association, LLC, Michigan Limited Liability Company, and the city of Southfield. And it effectively amends the purchase agreement signed February 1st and amended on September 22nd, and then again on October 23rd. So this is the Third Amendment in there. And in my communication, I go through the course of those amendments.
Any questions, council? Councilman Hoag?
Mr. President?
Yep.
I move that we authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the Third Amendment and Restatement of Purchase Agreement by and between John Grace Arms Limited Dividend Housing Association and the city of Southfield, effectively amending the purchase agreement, subject to the agreement being approved in the final form by the city attorney.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Haines, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines to approve the John Grace Third Amendment Purchase Agreement. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for that approval. I too want to comment on the Police Chief Baron's nomination and acceptance into the Michigan Chronicle's Men of Excellence. It's an incredible crowd. Friday night, I was looking at the QRP Code, and it's a very elite group and very impressive and going on for 18 years. And it was a fun time as well. As an organization, we just don't get too many casual events. Want to comment too on Priority Waste, remind you that they are implementing that change impacting over 700,000 residents in southeastern Michigan. The no one, route pickup schedules have changed. Your garbage is to be out by 7:00 AM. There are cameras on those trucks. They televise things. You know, if you, if your garbage isn't out there, and we get, you know, they'll give you one grace is what we've been told. But if it's a repeat thing, they won't be picking up your garbage. And I'll also state this, gonna really caution people on lithium batteries being disposed in garbage. I think that it's becoming a much larger issue. The fires we've had at our own recovery facility here in Southfield, operated by Ros Soc and private operated by Republic Services, those lithium batteries were the cause of both of those fires. And folks disposing of the, you know, the lithium batteries we use in our power tools and the kids' go-karts and, and other things need to be disposed of in a proper way. We have household hazardous waste. That's where, how they should be disposed of. We are working on a campaign to do a better job educating in that arena. Want to comment on the storm sewer. These storms come through, heavy rains, a lot of debate. We as a community, community has made, have made large investments in our infrastructure, in our streets, sewers, and in particular, this part of the city has had some of the largest investments with these separators. I will tell you, we are committed to having an independent engineering firm evaluate the work that has been done. And some of this has already been done based on the incident that happened in, in '22. But we need the input from our residents. We will probably be doing a lot of very aggressive line investigation from our system to the launching from the private leads, as far as our cameras will take us. But we are gonna need our residents' help to figure out, to best resolve this situation. So my, my final comment, Fourth of July, COVID numbers are up. The CDC is no longer tracking the numbers, but we know across the country that they are up. I, I will just, it's almost flashback to, to January of 2020. You know, just the basic things our mom taught us. Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, wipe things down, and let's keep each other safe and work together to, you know, get through this hump and hope it's just a seasonal type spike. That's all I have this evening, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. And as we mentioned the fireworks, I thought, why not hear that if you do get a civil infraction for violating the fireworks ordinance, the fine is $1,000.
Okay.
He's smiling with a big smile.
Yeah, I know. Try to find them.
No, and that's, that's it. There's no like 500 to 1,000. It's $1,000.
Thank you.
And I have nothing further. I have a safe holiday.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. Quickly, just want to tell the voters in this active voting city that we have mailed out approximately 1,300 and 13,700 absentee ballots as of last Thursday. And you should be receiving those people who are on the permanent voter list, as well as who have requested absentee ballots from the clerk's office. And you can complete them and return them as soon as possible to the clerk's office. You don't have to hold it any closer to August the 6th, which is the official election day. And just remember to sign your ballot and enclose it in a secrecy sleeve. It's a manila, manila envelope that comes with your ballot, so we can process it efficiently and confidentially. Thank you.
All right. Treasurer, Planner, Assessor, Engineer, nothing to schedule. Our meeting is adjourned.